If you have not filled out a card and you would like to speak for this time's curtain, you will need to go through those doors and take these back in the back for you to fill out a card. Your name will be called and we'll let you come up to the podium. You'll be allowed three minutes to speak. After three minutes, Mr. Crosby will let me know that your time is up and then I'll ask you to sit down. Also, if you've already spoke, you will not be allowed to speak again unless the commissioners have a question, then we can ask you any que-- you know, we'll be able to ask you a question and at that time you can come back up if and only if we ask you a question. All right, Mr. Lane?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I don't know how Mr. Pearson handled this during the past, but I guess this is my best knowledge as to the way that this should be approached. I've written down some ground rules. This is what is known as a quasi judicial hearing. What that means essentially is that notice in a hearing or require an injunction or order will ultimately be made by the board based upon showing made at this hearing. The court here in Florida has held quasi judicial hearings should, number one, accord procedural due process; two, observe essential requirements of law; and, number three, decision must be based on what is known as competent substantial evidence. What that means is that the board's decision can be based merely on the desires of the majority of people who support or oppose a particular position. However, citizens may testify to factual matters within their personal knowledge and may present documentary evidence which constitutes competent substantive evidence. Mere opinion is not competent substantial evidence. Section 12.09 of the Gilchrist County Land Development Code prescribes the conduct and the procedure for quasi judicial hearings before the board. Under our boardments, the chair of the board can set reasonable time limits on the presentation of testimony and other evidence so as to ensure that we can get through all the number of speakers that want to speak tonight, and that's what she's done with the three minute of time limit. Also, I believe on the signature cards that you signed when you came in at the door, if you were speaking or willing to speak for a group of three or more, that time limit is extended to 10 minutes, but all of the people you represent must be here tonight. The applicant has the burden of proving that proposal satisfies the applicable standards of the Land Development Regulation. Again, testimony or other evidence that is irrelevant or immaterial to the issue to be decided by the board is inadmissible. The chair, commission members, party, or staff may raise an objection to irrelevant and immaterial testimony or evidence, or testimony that is undue, cumulative, or repetitious of previously presented testimony, or evidence by fellow opponent or proponent. The order of proceedings shall be as follows. I'll cover number A right now. The first thing in our Land Development Code states that the board of commission shall determine whether it has jurisdiction over this matter. Well, per section 12.14.01 of our Land Development Code, all planning permission duties and authority were transferred to the county commissioners, the board commissioners, beginning 7/1 of 2011. So, you're now wearing the planning permission hat to make this decision tonight. So, you have jurisdiction to hear the matter. I understand that there's been a proper advertisement in the paper, property's been posted, so notice has been given in accordance with your Land Development Regulations. Members of the board or commission shall, if necessary, state, we'll get into this just a minute, state whether or not they have a conflict of interest or most otherwise disqualified themselves from hearing the case. Members of the board of commission shall disclose and place on record any ex parte contacts relating to this matter before the board of commission. We'll also get to that. The way we'll proceed, we'll have an introduction of petition by the planning director, Ms. Dedenbach, and presentation by her. Then we'll have a presentation by the applicant, Mr. Bennet and Mr. Beecham. Then we'll have any kind of presentation by affected parties. We'll have a rebuttal by applicant, rebuttal by staff, rebuttal by affected parties, public input, deliberation, and vote of the board of commission, and then ultimately based upon decisions the board will prepare with the assistance of Ms. Dedenbach, an execution of title or go on with this meeting. Sworn testimony shall not be required at this hearing unless a party requests that a witness be sworn, and the applicant shall be entitled to cross-examine any witnesses testifying at this hearing. The clerk has the oath in case Mr. Beecham chooses to have someone sworn. Florida statutes and the Gilchrist County ordinance require that a person prior to this hearing who has engaged in any ex parte or one-sided communication from someone, member of the public, through documentary, mailings, emails, et cetera, they're required to place on the record notice of any such written communications received, any responses to such communications that they have written in response to that, or a memo or verbal statement setting forth the substance of those communications. So, at this time, I would ask each of the board members to place any information that they received and have put it on the record filed after the clerk before we get started in with the hearing.
If you will just pass that. Now, make sure though your name is on your piece of paper. That way we know what commissioners have to contact.
Well, I didn't cut out the name of the question.
You can do that. You can do it either way.
I have a long list.
Some of the members have a long list.
I have a long list.
And let me just call out the question?
To my knowledge, I've had discussions and I didn't give an opinion one way or the other, but I would be willing to listen to the evidence and make the decision at that time. And I did talk to Mr. Ray Rouse, Mr. Ron St. John, Mr. Ray Cannon. I think I just had an email with Steve Gladden and Charles Smith. And I have the emails, and every email I got, letters concerning this, I sent to Gilchrist Archives. I assume that's all I have to do.
Yes, sir.
And I've got printed out copies of those. Do I need to turn a little bit of every other archive?
If you have already printed up, we can get them upstairs and I'll just turn those over. To my knowledge, that's all I've ended up discussing.
Mr. Kipper?
I've spoken to Mr. Ron St. John, Mr. Don Bennet, Sandy McGough briefly, Mr. Steve Gladden, Ray Cannon, and spoken with Ms. Jean Monster, and she brought up that maybe since I was tied up with people that work for areas and stuff, maybe I should step down. And I spoke with the lawyer and everything, and he says that I'm okay, but I thought that I could say to the book that I cannot be bought, bribed, or threatened to make decisions, whatever decision I make to deal with.
And I reviewed that as well as far as any conflict of interest by Mr. Thompson. I believe that this matter nears to his private interests or he has some bullies of his private interests. So, I did get a letter when I got here from Mr. Laura Chesburgh.
I will turn that in.
And I'll turn that in to them.
All right. Okay. I'll place mine, I gave my.
So, the chair, Commissioner, is in?
You turn this in.
Yeah, I have a long list of phone calls, emails, dates, and times, and all the attachments for the record have been submitted.
Okay. You got yours, Tom?
I've turned my list in. It's, I think, around 22, 23 people, emails, telephone calls, text messages. All the emails are in the archives. I didn't print them off. They're still on my phone if you want them. But they come through the county, so they're archived. Anybody wants to see them, I can bring them on.
Well, and this is kind of a newfangled thing. Now, I'm kind of old school, but you know, now somebody can email you instantaneously in these quasi judicial hearings. Traditionally, we would advise boards, you know, don't communicate privately here. Now, it's hard to do that. So, Florida statute states that there's a presumption of prejudice if you have ex parte communications, but you can cure that by disclosing on the record that you had those communications, and that's what the purpose of this law is, for you to disclose if you had any contact with anyone else. And your Land Development Regulations also speak to that, they say that you can cure any presumption of prejudice by disclosing on the record. So, that being said, if everyone's turned in those contacts.
Do I need to read all those now?
Not if you have on a written list that you're going to submit to the clerk to be filed, with the evidence and testimony that we're going to be putting here in this sitting here.
If you don't respond to an email, I get emails that I don't respond because I don't know how.
But if you read them, you need to disclose that you've read them and who.
Well, they are archived.
Okay. So, I wrote down about 20 people right now.
Do you want to disclose those, Ms. Thompson, or can you recall the ones that?
When they on the telephone, I did erase them.
They're archived.
Yeah, but they're all archived. You don't use them?
Together, yeah.
Probably the same ones you all, you don't have.
But I don't return emails, I read them, but I don't return them.
You don't explain them. Does any member of the board believe they have any sort of conflict of interest that would require them to accuse themselves in this proceeding?
Anybody have any?
Okay, just a couple of other things we'd like to get. Once the board hears all the testimony and receives all the evidence submitted, it will then deliberate determine whether to grant or deny the special use permit, or grant the special use permit with conditions, or then deny the permit. I believe that this concludes my general statement as the order of procedures. Does the board have any questions? Very none. Mr. Beecham, do you and Mr. Bennet have any questions?
No.
At this point, I'll turn the meeting back over to the chair and I'll just tell if you have any legal questions during the proceedings, please speak up and I'll look out.
All right, thank you. We're going to do the presentation by the staff first.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Commissioners. My name is Laura Dedenbach, for the record, and your county planner. Tonight, we're hearing specialty use permit application request 2013-02. This is a request to expand an existing intensive agriculture use, a dairy, Sprague Field, and other associated uses.
And I say, Commissioners, this is on page six.
Beginning in approximately 1980, North Florida Holstein has incrementally increased their dairy operations, which are centrally located on County Road 121 and County Road 232. The current dairy operations include 3,600 lactating cows, 300 dry cows in containment, additional dry cows, huffers, and bulls housed on pasture land, six freestall barns, a milking parlor, commodities area, and a waste storage pond system. And this is all located on the property that we're referring to as the main dairy property. In April of 2011, the applicant was issued an industrial wastewater permit by the Florida Department of Environmental Protection that would allow them to increase their operations to 4,950 lactating cows, 745 dry cows in containment, 650 calves housed in barns, the construction of two additional freestall barns, and the addition of the Piedmont track into the intensive agricultural operations of Sprague Field. All of what we discussed as the existing dairy operation now, plus what is in their agriculture, excuse me, intensive industrial wastewater permit issued by DEP is what you're considering under your specialty use permit before you this evening. There are four different tracks that we're dealing with here, and the first is the main dairy. And if I can call your attention to two particular parcels that came to my attention during the review, and I wish that I noticed this sooner, but here we are. I guess there's no corner here. The parcel that is the most northern parcel called the Northern Pivot Track, it's got the parcel number written across it there where Patty's got the cursor. That parcel and the parcel immediately to the east that's divided by the Swanee Street, those three parcels are A1. And so, when I talk about the A1 parcels, it's those three parcels that are located within section 31 of the main dairy track. The remainder of that parcel has a land use category of A2. The next parcel track that we'll be looking at consists of four different parcels, and it's what I'm calling the Piedmont Track. And this property is divided into portions of A5 and A6. And I have the acreage calculations. Approximately 280 acres is A5 future land use and 620 acres is the silviculture agriculture. And I'll show you a future land use map shortly after that.
Met on the Piedmont Track?
This is the Piedmont Track. Okay, and then the next parcel tract that we're talking about is called the Grayjohn Track. I named it the Grayjohn Track because that's who owned it prior to North Florida Holstein's purchasing it, and they needed to call it something. Those are all A2. And then the final, and I should say about the Grayjohn Track too, is that I'm not certain that those parcels are included in their industrial wastewater permit, but the applicant included them in the special use permit, so I'm going to assume that they are. And then this South Pivot Track is included in the industrial wastewater permit issued by the state, and it has a land use of A2 as well. Then the applicant has provided some conceptual plans as part of the application requirements that they may talk about in more detail, but it shows existing and proposed uses on the main dairy site and then also the Piedmont Track site. And then after these is the conceptual plan for the Piedmont Track that shows the Sprague Field areas and the wetlands. And then the next is the future land use map for the Piedmont Track. You can see the divide between the yellow and the red. The yellow is A5 and the red is the silviculture agriculture. And then the future land use for the main dairy, the gray is the A1, and then the remainder in green is the A2. The reason that we're looking at these parcels in conjunction with the FDAP industrial wastewater permit is that your comprehensive plan specifically defines intensive agriculture as those agricultural uses which require an industrial wastewater permit to be issued by the Florida Department of Environmental Protection. So, everything that we're assessing under that designation or under that industrial wastewater permit is what we're using to define as intensive agriculture per your comprehensive plan. The surrounding uses to all of these properties are a variety of agriculture, mostly agriculture two. The parcels surrounding the Piedmont Track are mostly silviculture agriculture or A5. And then also, I'd like to show you a wetlands map of the Piedmont Track. Everything in green there is shown as a wetland. This is National Wetlands Inventory Map. If you also compare that to the conceptual plans that the applicant submitted, everything on that land that's just green, that's the natural green tree areas on the conceptual plan, are the wetland plus wetland buffers that are contained within the DEP permit. As I stated before, your comprehensive plan defines intensive agriculture uses as those agricultural uses which require the industrial wastewater permit from DEP. In reviewing the agricultural land use categories pertinent to this application, the county prohibits intensive agriculture uses both in the A1 category and in the silviculture agriculture category. And it is very specific prohibition of intensive agriculture uses both in your comprehensive plan and your Land Development Code. Intensive agriculture operations are allowed in the A2 through A5 categories. So, with those descriptions, I give you the following recommendation based on the application that's been submitted to us, that the application be denied based on the following. Future land use element policy I.2.2.1 and section 8.02.01A of the Land Development Code defines intensive agriculture as any agriculture use requiring an industrial wastewater permit from the Florida Department of Environmental Protection. Industrial wastewater permit issued by the Florida Department of Environmental Protection for North Florida Holstein's dairy operations includes the Piedmont Track, which has future land use designation of silviculture agriculture, and three parcels of the main dairy which have a future land use designation of A1. Future land use policy I.2.2.2 prohibits intensive agriculture uses in the silviculture agriculture future land use category. Future land use element policy I.1.6.1 prohibits intensive agriculture in the A1 future land use category. Section 2.04.03A and 2.05.03A Land Development Code prohibit intensive agriculture requiring an industrial wastewater management permit from the Florida Department of Environmental Protection in the silviculture agriculture and A1 land use categories respectively. Section 8.02.02C11 of Land Development Code requires the location of proposed intensive agriculture to be consistent with the comprehensive plan and Land Development Code. Approval of the proposed specialty use permit would authorize intensive agriculture operations in the A1 and silviculture agriculture future land use categories. The proposed specialty use permit application is inconsistent with the Gilchrist County comprehensive plan. The proposed specialty use permit application is inconsistent with the Gilchrist County Land Development Code. Upon the discovery of the A1 parcels and in discussion with the county administrator and county attorney, I had, I provided a note to your recommendation in that if you desire to move forward with permitting this special use permit outside of the Piedmont Track, I would favorably recommend processing a future land use map amendment on the A1 parcels to A2. Those are the tax parcel, three tax parcel numbers that begin with section 31. Beginning at your June meeting, these amendments would be large scale amendments and would have to be sent to the Department of Economic Opportunity for review under the expedited review process. Under this process, the VOCC would hold a transmittal hearing. The amendment would then be sent to DEO and the review agencies for review comment, and after the 30-day review and comment period, the VOCC would be able to take final action on the amendments. And the special use permit could then be considered at the same meeting as the amendment adoption, and feasibly, this would be your second meeting in August, which I believe is your August 17th meeting. I think that it is, if the applicant desires, and I have discussed this with Mr. Beecham to let him know what we found with the A1 properties, and so if the applicant wants to move forward with those amendments, then we are in favor of processing those amendments to A2. But I will be very clear for the record, and I've been clear to the applicant through our code enforcement hearings, that should they choose to pursue a comprehensive plan amendment on the silviculture agriculture piece, that is not something that staff would be able to support if they wanted to change it to A5. I feel adamant that intensive agriculture operation should not occur in a portion of the county that's defined as the Wacassasas Flats, which has a regional significance.
That's the portion out of 2022, Dr.?
Yes, that's the portion that's the silviculture agriculture.
But?
Go ahead.
Main dairy.
Yes.
How much is in A1?
It works out to be, I think it's just a way I calculated it out. It's, I think it's a little over 100 acres.
Is it A1?
That's in A1. Okay, so it's closer to 200 acres. The North Pivot Track is 163 acres. The portion of the, the parcel that's north of Swanee Street is 34 acres, and the parcel that's south of Swanee Street is just a little under 6 acres.
Under 6?
Under 6. It's 5.7.
And these are all A1?
Those are the three A1 parcels. And, you know, our intent, my intent was not to play gotcha with these parcels. I think that they would be appropriate to change to A2.
It'd be appropriate to change these A1s to A2.
Right, and we can't, we just can't accomplish that at tonight's meeting, and you can't approve the special use permit with the A1.
Anybody have any questions, Commissioners, Mr. Ford, Ms. Tom? Okay.
Your recommendation of denying the model of the permit?
My recommendation on the application, if it includes the A1 and silviculture agriculture parcels, is denial on the entire thing. If at the end of your deliberations this afternoon or this evening, you want to move forward with a special use permit that would accommodate the A1 parcels in addition to the main dairy and basically everything except for the silviculture agriculture pieces, then I would recommend that you defer action on the special use permit until we can process the comprehensive plan amendments and.
The 232, the 232 parcel away from the main dairy?
Piedmont, yes.
Is, is now zone A5?
No, A6.
A6.
It's part of it, about a little over 200 acres of it is A5, and then the balance of the property is A6. There's about 620 acres.
Intensive agriculture is allowed on A5?
It is.
Do I have the special use permit?
That's correct. You still would have to have the special use permit, and also deferring of the special use permit would allow us to come back with conditions for buffering or other things.
I see what you're saying, the intensive ag is not allowed right now on A6 or A1, but you have no problem changing A1 to A2?
That's correct.
But you do have a problem changing A6 to A5?
Yes, ma'am.
Is anybody having questions from the floor?
Laura, I think you need to clarify that A1 type land is appropriate for this use? It's just classified A1 because of this?
Yes.
So, I think you need to clarify that to the audience that may not know that.
Okay. A1 is, your land use categories are divided into urban categories and rural categories. And what separates A1 is that it is a more dense category, but I mean not, you know, dense by agricultural standards. And this is just on the southern part of Bell's Urban River area, which is why it has the A1 classification. But in terms of the North Pivot Track, it's something that they're currently using in their dairy operations, and it's, you know, just a Sprague Field area, basically. So, yes, the only reason that it's designated as A1 is that once upon a time in the regional plan, there were urban areas designated around your municipalities, and those were areas that theoretically the municipality could annex from, and it would be, you know, redevelopment could occur there in a more intense fashion, and you could even have commercial in the county that they're, you know, they're, they're an urbanized area, basically, of the municipality. But the regional plan doesn't actually contain those designations anymore, but that's why your future land use map was based on those, you know, why it has the A1 encircling the municipality. This is just a density issue. That was a very long way of saying what you said. Thank you.
Anybody have any other questions, Laura? Okay, thank you. All right, now we'll have a presentation by the applicant, Mr. Bennet, and also Mr. Beecham.
I'm the chairperson, Commissioners. I'm Greg Beecham, attorney from Cheekland, and as much as it pains me, I gotta say, how about them tigers? Congratulations, coach outside earlier today. As Ms. Dedenbach said, we're before you today on an application for a special use permit. And if I may, I'd like to give you a little background, some of which will be repetitive of what she said. As you probably know, Mr. Bennet, Don Bennet, and Dave Temple own and run the large dairy, Your Battle, off the County Road 232, and that dairy's been in existence since 1980. The dairy is known not just in this state or in the United States, but in countries throughout the world as being one of the most progressive and scientifically advanced dairies. In addition, North Florida Holstein's LC is the largest private employer in Gilchrist County and is known as a good corporate citizen. North Florida Holstein's LC. North Florida Holsteins has a good reputation with Department of Environmental Protection. They recently have an inspection and were found in good standing. Some of the repetitive stuff is in two thousand and eight, North Florida Holstein purchased approximately eight hundred and eighty acres in and near the Waukesas Flats area, and it's been passed as the Piedmont tract. That property is primarily in an A6 zone with some A5 zoning, A6 being silviculture slash agriculture. That land was purchased not for the purpose of expanding the intensive ag use that is at the main dairy property. It was purchased so that he could grow grass and fertilize that grass with natural nutrients. Those are permitted uses in the A6, A5 zones. And that is exactly what North Florida Holsteins is conducting on the Piedmont tract. The fact that it is spreading nutrients on the land is not in and of itself an expansion of the intensive ag use, nor is it a code violation. The use being made of the property is, in fact, considerably less intensive than some of the permitted uses that she put up on the board in A6 and A5 zones, such as, and I'm not good with pointers, so I'll just talk. Let's see, dwell units, development units, rifle shotgun pistol ranges, hunting and fishing camps, telecommunications towers are allowed. Development units are structures commonly associated with road rocks, pasture hunting, or silviculture activities, such as barns, outbuildings, and sheds, vehicle storage, small mill operations, and small office structures, provided that any structure involving farm animals and livestock shall be no closer than forty-five feet of any lock mine. The densities allowed in the A6 is one jogging unit per hundred and sixty acres or one development unit per eighty acres. I have defined development activities as previously stated. So what Mr. Bennett's dairy is doing is considerably less intensive than what is already permitted in that area, which is a point that I think we never were able to get across to the staff in the meetings that we had. North Florida Holsteins was not aware that we needed a special use permit to conduct activities on the Piedmont tract that are permitted uses in the current zoning for that land, as came about after we received the code violation notice. We want the special use for the intensive ag use at the main dairy, not for the Piedmont tract.
You want one hour of PDA?
We want the special use permit that we've applied for to apply only to the main dairy property. We're not asking that it be extended to the Piedmont tract. We agree that the plan clearly says, at least in A6, that intensive ag use is prohibited, and we're not making an intensive ag use of the Piedmont tract. And that's where I think that that maybe the communication between staff and us, we were never able to bridge that miscommunication.
But it says in our LBRs that intensive ag use required in industrial waste permit from this state shall be allowed only in ag district except A6. So A6, you got a wastewater permit, so that is considered as an intensive ag. So you're not asking for approval on that?
No, not on the Piedmont tract. The fact that a piece of land is included on a required DEP permit does not necessarily mean that you're changing the zoning if the use or making of that property is not in violation of the current zoning, and that is exactly the case we have here.
Then Mr. Beecham, why is it included in the DEP permit?
Now, Mr. Bennett will speak to that later, and that's a very good question. As a result of the meetings with the staff on the supposed code violation, we discovered that any changes in the DEP permits that are required for every intensive ag use farmer or dairyman that has the required water permit, that we also have to come back if there's a change to the DEP permit, if they increase the number of cows, if they build a barn, if they increase the number of pigs or cattle, if that's such an intensive ag use. That not only do they have to satisfy DEP, but as it's currently interpreted, at least to us, you know, we now have to come back to the county each time if we build another barn. So almost twenty years since the nineteen ninety-four date, North Florida Holsteins learns that just being in full compliance with DEP does not necessarily mean that we're in full compliance with.
And I think that that's stated also in the industrial waste permit that you receive, that you have to be in compliance also with the county's rules and regulations.
And that's what we're trying to do today. I'm saying we did not know.
Right, but it states in here that you should be in.
Again, Mr. Bennett will speak specifically to you. So that's what we're trying to accomplish, to be in compliance with DEP as well as Gilchrist County's regulation. And Ms. Deanbox, the report mentions in numerous places the problem with the three parcels that she put up on the board that are designated currently as A1. They're located looking north of the dairy proper towards Bell. And she and I had a conversation last week that she had discovered that issue, and those parcels actually are grandfathered in since the North Florida Holsteins owned that property when the zoning was changed to A1. But having said that, we have no problem with that property being changed to A2. It certainly would make your code of land use map more consistent. I do disagree with her that you cannot act on the request for the special use permit without having to change that. You can make a condition upon those being changed. So I do disagree with her that you have to put off action tonight to change that zone. Again.
Greg.
Yes, sir.
If if it was approved such to A1 becoming A2, would the use of that property be any different, or is it not?
Yes, that you're that he's making of it today, we're not changing.
Would it allow, would it be enough that they're doing now?
Not unless you approve it to allow more than.
We can't speak with the office of being reported.
Laura Deanbox, thank you. Commissioner, only if you allowed another use to occur there, would it become more intensive at that particular location?
That's what I'm trying to ask. If it were to be changed, would it become more intensive than it is, you're saying that?
Currently, no. I haven't talked to him about his future plans on that, if it was changed to A2. I mean, it could be more, obviously, more intensive than A2.
But if he changes the use of it, then he'll have to come out before us for special use permits.
Nonetheless, he was doing something that was not permitted in A2.
You say it changed that from what it is now to A2, that didn't bring our maps and more?
The use being made of the property will become more consistent, yes, sir, because it's not allowed in A1. But that wasn't, Mr. Bennett's fault. You know, that was the map drawers and the compilation of the compounding. Because he was making that use of that property when it was, when the map was changed.
Well, my question with Mr. Bennett would be, does he have any plans to do anything different?
Yes, sir. That's a good question to ask him, and he will be up there for you to ask him. But I agree, that question needs to be asked. So I'd like to emphasize, we're not seeking a permit to expand the intensive ag use of the dairy to the Piedmont tract. There are no plans to put dairy cows or pivots on that property. He only wants to continue to grow grass and apply natural fertilizer to the property, which any, if you own that property, Mr. Thomas, you could do what he's doing, the actual work that he's been doing, okay? You could grow grass as a permitted use, and you could apply natural fertilizer or commercial fertilizers.
Without a special use permit?
Yes, sir, because it's that activity is a permitted use in the A6 and the A5 zones.
But if he had an industrial waste permit, he could not do it, because that's what our LBRs say.
If he were applying intensive ag uses to that property, yes. The fact that the property is placed on a permit for DEP doesn't necessarily make it an intensive ag use if that use is not being made on the property, and that's our whole position. You can tie his hands so that he can't put dairy cows out there, he can't put a pivot out there, he can't do anything but grow grass or any other allowed use under A6, A5. And he's going to testify that some of the activities they've done have actually made that property better for that property and surrounding property.
With the assumption of this, why would y'all even consider putting that piece of property in the special use permit?
We objected to that. We were told by staff that we had to, to be honest with you.
Because it was hard.
Of that permit. It was shown on the DEP permit, yes.
That's only E4, that's why it's hot.
Yes, sir. But I'm saying those two things can be separated.
Why would you separate, and that is piece of property here?
And that may be an option that we have to explore.
Why could y'all ask that be included when you apply for your industrial waste permit? Why do you ask the Piedmont?
Staff told us that we had to. Yes, sir, we disagreed with that. It came out of a result of the hearing, not the hearing, but the conversation.
You've got this industrial waste permit?
Could I answer this question first?
Yes, go ahead.
That came out of the discussions we had with the staff prior to a code violation hearing, trying to get some communication and understanding where we were, and we thought that's what we needed to do.
Yeah, but I think it was a misconception there. The question was, why was that property placed into the DEP permit? Staff didn't have anything to do with that.
No, staff did not have anything to do with that.
Well, you just said it did, and that's what you just.
No, not the waste permit. I thought you were talking about the application that we filed. Okay, I'm sorry. No, staff had nothing to do with that.
All right. You can.
Thank you.
You have anything else?
No, at this time.
Mr. Bennett, you have anything?
I'll wait for the public discussion.
Okay. We'll now have Mr. Lane, you can now do the public discussion this time.
A presentation, yes.
Okay. And then y'all have the cards, and you'll call, and just remind me when your name is called to the podium. You're going to be talking to us, you're not going to be talking to anybody else in the audience who's addressing us, the commissioners. Also, after three minutes, Mr. Crosby will interrupt and let you know that your time has expired, and you'll only be able to speak one time.
I'm just gonna add to that, if someone speaks ahead of you and they say what you were gonna say, there's no need to be repetitions of the comments up there.
And if you have anything to pass out, don't approach us, you will just hand it to the clerk, and the clerk will pass it out to us, any information that you have. Right, Mr. Lane?
Are there any cards that haven't been turned in up here? Okay, these cards are in no particular order, and I'll just read the first one with the staff here is Martha Barnes.
And although we're calling her name for the record, just in case we pronounce her name incorrect, just make sure you reset your name.
Martha Barnes. My purpose of coming to discuss with you is, most of you, if Ray knows where I live, I think John Thomas knows where I live. I live just off the Santa Fe River, in west of State Route forty-seven. And an incident occurred a few years back which had us very concerned. A gentleman out of Jackson lived, dumped some sludge on the section of land that is west of forty-seven, about two miles south of the Santa Fe River. And at that time, shortly after that, the waters, we didn't have a flood, we had excessive rain, and all that sludge came down Cow Creek, went into the river. It was months and months later that sludge was on docks in the Santa Fe River. And that's what some of the neighbors and I are concerned about, that this too much sludge on the Piedmont tract could possibly affect our river. Any questions?
Any questions? All right. Thank you.
Excuse me just a minute. Mr. Beecham, did you have any questions?
No, we're fine.
All right. Who do you have next?
Jane Hattker, I believe.
I'm going to decline this.
Looks like Frank Cagan.
Frank Cagan, I live near Martha, will reinforce what she said. We had a problem a few years ago. Stuff you dump in the Waukesas Flats does not stay in the Waukesas Flats. It seeps into our drinking water, it flows down Cow Creek in a storm, it flows into the Santa Fe in a storm, and we've all seen the degradation that's happened. And that was human excrement out of Jackson. And I were talking about cow, every one of those precious cows is responsible for approximately a hundred pounds of waste to death. If we start moving the solid waste portion of that into the Waukesas Flats, that'd be on the neighborhood of thirteen tons a cow per year of solid waste being put into the Waukesas Flats. It's not to be stayed, trust me. It's gonna ruin the rivers.
Mr. Bennett, do y'all have any?
I guess I can probably make this a standing objection.
You need to speak in the, if you need to speak, when you speak, I'll just state your name again, so.
Greg Beecham for the applicant. Plus, I can probably make this a standing objection, but rather than have them do it every time, that when they testify that the waste is gonna move into the rivers, there's no scientific data, they've not fallen by as an expert. We've seen it.
If he's speaking right now, you don't need to be speaking.
And for it to be considered substantial evidence, they have to be qualified as an expert or present appropriate scientific testimony.
Who do you have next?
Hi, lady commissioners, commissioners. I, my name is Garrett Quinn Levin. I come from Deansville, down to this meeting, and what worries me is that the pollution is a pollution of the Florida aquifer, is a more than just a county issue that affects only just one county, that affects more than one, that's why it would affect people's lives in county and perhaps other counties as well. I understand that the, that the pollution would eventually necessarily go into the rivers, but certainly people would end up in the aquifer, the Florida aquifer, and that's what worries me. I would hopefully ask the commissioners not to allow a continued ruination and destruction of our aquifer and the streams by special use.
Same objection, that's not competent and substantial.
Annette Long.
Can you speak up, please?
Can you speak louder in the night so everybody can hear, please?
Hello, my name's Annette Long. I'm here as a citizen and also representing a group called Save Our Swanee. Our headquarters are in Bell. To start with, I would like to ask North Florida Holsteins to please supply the data from their FDEP monitoring wells. They're telling you that the people that just talked don't have substantial evidence, but around large farms like that where there's lots of animal waste, the monitoring wells almost always exceed the safe drinking standard for nitrate nitrogen. If they don't, there are always a few that don't, but there are. If they don't, there are always a few that don't, but there are always a few that do as well. I really came here tonight, we have a member, Karen S. Jolhome, who lives down in South Florida, who bought land a long time ago. I'd like to submit her letter to the record. And basically what she said is what the staff said. She is an environmental consultant and bought that land specifically because she thought because it was zoned the way it was, she wouldn't expect cow poop to be dumped on the land next door to where she lived. And I also wanted to tell you that they say they're not doing intense land use there because the cows aren't there, but they're bringing the worst part of the cow to that property to get rid of it. The problem isn't the cows, the problem's what comes out of the cows. And they put that into their DEP permit, I'm sure, because the DEP said you can't put all the waste in this one spot. You've got so much, you have to find some place to put it. It shouldn't be near the wetlands. And it shouldn't be in an area that y'all zoned environmentally sensitive years ago. It's not fair to the people who bought the land there and are paying taxes there. And I'll end it. In 10 years of beating my head against the wall to try to save the Swanee, I've realized if we fix the water quality, the drinking water quality for rural people, for people who have single home wells, we'll fix the Swanee in the springs. And anytime you apply that amount of waste to the sandy soils we have here, and especially to the very leaky sandy soils in the Waukesha Flats, you're not just going to have problems with the springs and the river and the aquifer. People are liable to come up with dangerous drinking water wells. Thank you for your time.
Is the letter? I'm sorry.
Yeah, I handed it out to everybody. I mean, you have.
Would you give Mr. Beecham a copy, please?
Sure. Actually.
I think you need to speak, Mr. Beecham, I asked you to come to the mic, please.
Sorry.
We need to record this.
Greg Beecham for the applicant. I have a hard time objecting to Annette. I've heard her speak many times. I do have to object to the letter. I did cross-examine the letter. It wasn't provided.
That's one of the fines until that be read. Mr. Doug Crawford.
Good afternoon, my name is Doug Crawford. I was trying to grasp all that and get a concept of what's going on here. And it seems to me in the application that we are talking about some A6 and A5 zoning, and we're not talking about the zoning change for that property, are we?
No, we're not changing the A6 to A5.
Very well. Well, the use that Mr. Bennet proposed then on putting the natural fertilizers out there, as Mr. Beecham called it, is just a great use of the natural fertilizers. Talking about, he's talking about using crops out there that are going to rain from anywhere from a 90 to 120 day crop. And a lot of those grass crops use from anywhere from 150 to 240 pounds of nitrogen per acre. And that's what those grass crops need. And he's talking about putting a lot of waste out there, but you're also talking about a forest crop that's on that ground. We're not talking about putting it to bare soil, and we're worried about all that nutrients leaching out. We're talking about putting crops out there as well that is going to take up that nutrient. And it just seems like, kind of like all of the non-issue, we're not talking about changing any zonings out there. If we're just talking about using the land for what it's permitted for, it seems like a great use to me. And those numbers that I've thrown out, yes, I am a certified cultivizer, and all those numbers are, not only are we talking about nitrogen use, but we're talking about a lot of phosphate use and a lot of potash use and all the minor and micro nutrients as well. Grass crops are a good source of trying to use those nutrients that Mr. Bennet's putting on that property.
At this time, we ask the board if she has anything to speak on that. Well, I mean, do we need to ask her also if someone at each time also?
No, I'll present it. If she has anything, please.
Have you anything, Beecham?
No, sir.
All right, next.
Todd Bryant.
Is it possible that I can read a email?
Say your name to the record.
Todd Bryant. May I read an email that was sent from two constituents to, and carton copies of one of the county commissioners? I believe they're part of your archives.
If I couldn't, he shouldn't be able to.
Any of us talking?
I think what you need to do is make a copy of that for Mr. Beecham and present it to the record, but I don't think you can read it into the record. We're not allowing anybody to read it. It's not here to be cross-examined.
Okay. All right, I'll just make some brief comments.
Can you give that letter to the clerk?
Sure.
Can you pass it down so we can look at the letter?
Sure, let you give Mr. Beecham a copy.
And Mr. Beecham needs a copy of that.
The email is basically an email from a couple constituents to one of the county commissioners. And the email states that dairies need to be eliminated from Gilchrist County. And I don't believe I've ever spoken in a public forum before like this, but I felt that I needed to. I just want to say to the board that we need to make sure that we don't take the attitude of this writer when we're making our decision and in our decision-making process. Eliminating dairies in our county is totally unreasonable. We need to understand the benefits that dairies bring. Number one, they are the largest non-governmental employer in our county. Without the dairies, there's going to be a lot of folks without jobs. We would end up with the prison, and we'd have the schools, and the rest of us would be fighting each other for a paycheck. Dairies provide an economic base that continues to be critical to our county. During the past six or seven years, our agricultural community has been vital to our local economy. This, the farmers selling, the farmers and the retailers selling their products to the dairies, the silvers, the hay, the fuel, is an absolute number. Probably most important, though, is that dairies are, in my opinion, the most accountable agricultural base of anyone. They have to report more than any of the other farmers, anybody in agriculture. If dairies are eliminated, as the writer of this email would like, then our farmers will be the next group to be targeted. My family has lived here before this county was Gilchrist County. My great-grandfather lived here and farmed. My grandfather lived here and farmed. My father was farmed here. Some folks in this room haven't been here in this county very long. They haven't seen farming progress. I was for the dairies when they came in the 80s. I'm still for the dairies. My family supports the dairies, and our hope is that this board will continue to make sound decisions based on both facts and common sense, and we all work together. Thank you.
Mr. Beecham, you have your name.
No, Mr. B.
All right, next.
Mr. Mark Ray. Mark Ray.
Just set that one, just call that one again in a minute.
Governor Kitchell.
Governor Kitchell, sir, I'd like to take the first opportunity to thank you guys for hearing my concerns about the spray proposal, spray increment proposal. Roughly 25 years ago, I purchased a 20-acre tract of land that borders the proposed increased area in the Piedmont tract. According to what I've read on the website here, part of the proposal is also to run a 10-inch supply pipe, which kind of contradicts what was said earlier, that they weren't going to use it for those purposes, the spray field purposes. This, that's a 10-inch supply pipe that's going to run right along the forward edge of the entire length of the forward edge of my property. On the long side of the 20-acre tract that I purchased, that's also going to be part, it's wetland, and it's pretty obvious. I've spent time out there numerous occasions. And I just, I just don't feel comfortable with what's going on. And I'm not a farmer, and I don't claim to be. However, I did do some research on the effects and.